Welcome, everyone. Go ahead and call this September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, City Council meeting all other at five thirty-four P M. Um, Mister Lewis, if you'll lead us in prayer, then the pledge.
Thank you.
Bow our heads, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. In every need, let me come to thee with humble trust, saying, Jesus, help me. In all my doubts, perplexities, and temptations, Jesus, help me. In hours of loneliness, weariness, and trials, Jesus, help me. My heart is cast down by failure, at seeing no good come from my efforts, Jesus, help me. When others fail me, and thy grace alone can assist me, Jesus, help me. When I throw myself on thy tender love, and as Father and Savior, Jesus, help me. When I feel impatient, across my irritates meet, Jesus, help me. When sickness and loneliness overcome me, Jesus, help me. Always in weakness, falls, and shortcomings of every kind, Jesus, help me and never forsake me. We can end this, and in our Father, our Father.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespassing against us. And leaves not temptation, but deliveration for evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Um, agenda amendments, only one. Got something from Boys and Girls Club here. If everybody's okay, if we can put them under gas, so they don't have to wait to, uh, council business. Um, everybody go with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else you'll need to add, Mayor, or Mister Russo?
I think we're good.
You're good? Okay.
You do.
All right. Um, so, item A is proclamation for Constitution Week. Um, you want to read that?
Can you see it?
That's a big one.
Sixteen font.
Sixteen font.
Yeah.
Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of drafting the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document in its memorable anniversary and to the proclamation, to the patriotic celebrations which will be commemorative of this occasion. Whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through September twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Paul, Mayor of the City of Bay St. Louis, along with the City Council, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third as Constitution Week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Better do it now. Come back more often. It's fun. Okay.
All right.
So do we need a motion to put that on record?
Yeah.
Uh, motion, Mister Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Hoffman, vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, passes six-zero. Thank you. Um, B will be the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I received a letter here a little while ago, and we have some people present.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Mister Mayor, City Council members, uh, my name is Wayne Buchanan. I'm with the Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast. I'm the Senior Director of Resource Development. Uh, Miss Crystal is going to be, uh, passing out some information about, uh, an event that is coming up. Uh, but there is a, a letter, uh, that was, uh, that we would like to present. I believe you all have a copy of that letter. If not, I'm gonna read it, and it just says, uh, "Dear, uh, City of Bay St. Louis Council Members, uh, the Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast Hancock County Unit Board is hosting its annual Taste of the Future, uh, on November third, twenty twenty-three, at the Bay St. Louis Community Hall. This event will bring parents, families, and, and our community partners. Guests at this event will enjoy delicious, delicious samplings from local restaurants and vendors, a cash bar, a silent auction, and entertainment. The purpose of this event is to raise awareness and funds for the Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast Hancock County Unit. This letter serves as a formal request that the City of Bay St. Louis consider waiving the Bay St. Louis Community Hall rental fee for this event. And our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reap their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. And your, your support enables us to continue this mission and do whatever it takes to build great futures here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast and right here in Hancock County, uh, Bay St. Louis. And I don't know if, if anyone, uh, was able to go to the Taste of the Future, uh, event last year, but it was well attended. Uh, we had upwards of a hundred and fifty, probably more than that, uh, in, in attendance, and we were able to raise some funds which, uh, do help continue the, the work, uh, at the Hancock County, uh, unit here. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Miss Crystal, and she can share just a little bit about what the event has been for, for.
Hey, guys, Crystal Scratching, I'm the Unit Board President. I've served on this board for probably seven years now, um, native of Bay St. Louis. I know we all know how important the Boys and Girls Club is to this area. Um, we were very thankful last year when we were able to come and talk with you all about the same proposal. Um, so we are hoping that you will be able to, if not waive the fee, do as you did last year, and maybe split it with the Hancock Supervisors, um, is what the approach was last year. But I just want to point out, I know that there are a lot of nonprofits in the area. I know they all come asking different things. This is our one annual event. We do not have several events throughout the year. This one brings in the gamut of what we raise as far as our budget for our local Boys and Girls Club. And with that, I'll take any questions or if there's any discussion.
Council, any discussion? What's the fee on that?
I believe it's gone up to eighteen hundred.
I was trying to look it up too on the computer where they was talking about.
It's on November third, on a Friday.
Isn't this a nonprofit?
Well, it's, I think the new rates Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
Prop is the same month, I think, and Sunday through Thursday, it's half, or it's substantially less.
Yes.
Mayor, is that correct? Fridays, that falls on the weekend, right?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So, yeah, okay. We split it last year with the supervisor, is that?
I know we sent a resolution back and forth or something, I think, maybe, if I remember correctly, but, um.
I'd be happy to sponsor a hundred.
I'm tired with something's talking.
But I'd be happy to sponsor a hundred towards it.
All right. Yeah. I'll put two hundred up, I'll write them a check, so. Yeah, like I say, uh, Mister Hoffman and myself will put up some, some personal money. I just don't know how we, it's a slippery slope when we start there.
Well, yeah.
Unfortunately, because y'all one time a year, but then.
Other fifty-two people's got once a year as well, so.
Yeah, so.
It's tough. I mean, it's tough. We get a, a grab every, every meeting, we got somebody wanting a donation. Unfortunately, and every, everything's a good thing.
Yes.
Um, right? Um, it's at some point, not some point, but we find a total line and make sure we're doing it fair to everyone across the board. I'm chipping a hundred dollars, but, um, as far as giving away, we can't, we can't continue to give away.
Could, could you do it, and leave your name and phone number with Kate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kate can have that to get in touch with you. Thank you.
Any further discussion in the council?
Nah, I just, I just agree with Councilman Seal, just for consistency, say, keep into our, our, um, rate fees there, but I'm, I'm sure, um, many of the council have already obligated some, and I think a lot of us would be happy to pitch in something personally.
Okay, well, we'll be happy to follow up, and I'll give my information.
Yeah, give her stuff so we can get a check to you.
And of course, we want you to attend as well, so you have the information right in front of you. Come hang out.
Years ago, they had something called Steak and Steak. Is this taking the place of that, or?
No, that was, that was Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast, you know, wide, so, so, yeah, this is, this is specifically Hancock County.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Next up, Mayor's report, um, motion to approve the payroll ordinance six-six-two dash zero-nine, day of twenty twenty-three of the Mayor and City Council adopting salary schedule establishing salary compensation for officers and employees and open positions at the City of Bay St. Louis.
This is the one we worked on the budget, we just never adopted it?
Yes.
Okay, no changes.
Once the budget was approved last week, then we just need to adopt it.
Okay, same, everything's same.
Everything's the same.
Okay. Yeah, motion?
Motion, Mister Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Hoffman, any further discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, passes six-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
B, uh, motion to approve the salary scale for the.
Gene.
Gene. Uh, motion to approve the salary scale for the police and fire departments for twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. Do you have a motion?
Did we, we went through this, maybe the night I wasn't here, or where did?
This is the same thing we used last year.
This is part of it, that, with the, um, longevity pay and all, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Showing, showing all that as well.
So I just updated it from last year to this year with five percent cost of living increase.
Okay.
That way it's formally, it was on your minutes from August of last year, but.
Okay. So we just continue to upgrade it as we.
All this was.
Salary increase and stuff. I mean, it's great, it's great to have it, right? So we.
They've got a tool when they're recruiting people, they say, here's.
Well, right, it's, it's awesome. It's long overdue and long overdue, thank you for that.
Yes. All right.
All right, motion?
Motion, Mister Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Lewis, any further discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Right.
Aye.
All right, passes six-zero. Next, uh, recycling services, Mayor, let you take that one.
What this is, um, the county has millet that pays for all disposal fees. So when Waste Management's garbage disposal was up a few months back, we advertised, we ended up advertising twice, both times, they're the only ones that has a dump that put in for it. And the cost went up about twenty percent, went from a little over thirty-one dollars per ton to a little over thirty-seven dollars per ton. So that increase is pretty huge overall, somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred thousand dollar increase just on garbage disposal. So with this, they also looked at raising the millet as well, and to cover this cost and all, and they didn't, you know, for a, a small percentage of the people to tax the entire county, they just thought it wasn't fair. Which, again, you know, is something, we're looking at three hundred dollars expense, a three hundred thousand dollar expense to dump the dumpsters throughout the county, and I think we have five dumpsters. If it went to a general landfill, it would cost less than twelve thousand dollars a year. So with that, you know, they decided not to fund it, so we have, the options are, at the end of the month, that, uh, the five spots, they'll be removing those dumpsters. City can choose and go under the same contract with the proposal of three hundred and seventy-five dollars per pool, hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton disposal fee. At that rate, the City of Bay St. Louis uses on average about ten, with, with the two spots, which is Longfella and Bay St. Louis.
Looks like eleven thousand dollars a month.
About, yes, about eleven, ten to eleven thousand dollars a month it would cost the City of Bay St. Louis to dispose of the same amount that we would get. Um, Diamond Head has the same opportunity to kill, you know, um, county has the same opportunity, if they want to put one up there, Waveland as well. It's, uh, pretty much that no one is moving in that direction because of the cost, you know, on, on the citizen and all, nobody has it, you know. In our case, we're looking at a hundred and twenty, maybe excess of that. If we're the only one with a recycle bin, everybody from anywhere be able to come dump in it, we don't have the police to, 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 you know, to manage it and say, hey, you know, you don't live in Bay St. Louis, residents of Bay St. Louis paying for it, you know, so where does it stop? So our cost would probably increase along with that. So again, this, this has nothing to do with coastal, this strictly to do with the increase of, of disposal, which came at Waste Management's last bid last year, when we had to renew that, you know, contract that had expired on the disposal cost. They've, they've looked at, if they could get, I think it's fifteen hundred residents in the entire county, they could offer a select pickup for around thirty-two dollars per household. So that is something we can go out with the other entities and everything.
Thirty-two dollars per household per month, right?
Per month, thirty, that's correct. Thirty-three, thirty-three dollars per household per month paid upfront. The other options they came up with, if the three entities, Bay St. Louis, Waveland, Diamond Head, would agree to pick up at every household, the rate would be around nine twenty-five per month, per household. If the entire county was to do it, it would, I guess because of the distance they're running in the county, the cost would be around nine seventy-five. It goes up within county. So if, if you had Bay St. Louis, Waveland, Diamond Head, hey, we want to do recycling where every citizen, every household pays into it, it would cost us about nine twenty-five per household added to their utility rates. So, what's that?
Per month.
Yeah, per month.
Right.
Per month. And, and so, again, it comes down to a cost, it, and, and we do have some people use it, it is a, you know, a minority of the people that use it, a s- a small percentage, and, and again, it, right now, it's just not feasible, you know. I don't know how they pulling it and, and taking the pull from here to Pensacola with a driver and everything for three hundred and seventy-five dollars a trip. So, but this is what that contract called for when we went into it, they was the cheapest there was on this, on the recycling, it went as much as twelve hundred dollars a pull compared to, their cost is five fifty. The average weight in, in a dumpster when it's pulled is probably between a half and three quarters of a ton is what's fitted in one of these dumpsters. So it increases the cost because the amount of pulls that's being done, and also, and we could cut back on the amount we do, and, and say, we want to go to one pull per week, but it's gonna end up in, on the side. I think Diamond Head has a big problem with that, where, you know, the dumpster's full, and they just dump it on the side and just pile it up and all. And that's one of the things they fight every week on that. So again, you know, um, we don't have two hun- three hundred thousand dollars in the authority to offset this, where we can say, we can cut this and this and keep this. You know, it's pretty much a, a, a expense in, revenue in, and it takes care of itself.
Pass through, basically. Um, um, Mayor, um, you mentioned the, um, where we're bringing in the waste with Waste Management, is that a similar, is, is it have a CPI escalator? Is that why it went up, they exercised?
No, their rates have not gone up on this.
No, not, not coastal, but the dumping.
Disposal contract, so that was a twenty-year contract.
Yeah.
That expired last year. So it had to go completely be rebid.
Yeah, it, that's the reason it had to go out for rebid, same thing with the garbage pickup. You know, that contract had ended and needed to go out for bid, that was a six-year contract or eight-year, I forgot what it was, but, yeah. But, but it had expired, and this contract with them for, for, you know, disposal fee, and the bad thing is, they're the only ones in the ballgame, you know? We, until we can get a temporary possibly and move it to another, you know, site or something like that, which takes years to do, we don't have any other options but to use them.
And the authority actually tried to, I guess, be creative because they knew this bid was coming up, so when they went out for their collection contract, it was actually added as an alternative. And if I remember correctly, the price per ton was either, I, I think it was the same, if not very, very close, but I think it was the actual, the same when Waste Management bid it with collection as when they bid it on its own, so just.
Yeah.
Where that starts spiraling, that was.
And, and, yeah, and they wanted some crazy numbers, and they added, so that's when we went out for bid, because they wasn't going to honor their contract, and when it came, went out for bid, this is what the price went up to. Yeah. So that's why it was bid it out twice, you know, last year, well, this year, early in the year.
So that came in after all of that, so that the, the, that bid with, with that Waste Management was the, I guess, the lowest and best bidder, that came out after the pickup and the.
Yeah, a year later.
Well, well, wait, that's what I was trying to explain. So when the collection contract, there was an alternate line item that allowed for companies to bid on disposal, because we knew that it was coming up in a year and was going to have to be bid. So it was added in, what was that, twenty-two?
In twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two.
Or twenty-one, twenty-two, whenever that, whenever that went out.
Yeah.
So ultimately, Waste Management was not selected because they were overall significantly higher. So then it went out for bid again last year. Um, and that's where the mayor's talking about, it actually went out for bid twice, and the reason was, the first time that Waste Management submitted a bid, they, easiest way to put it is illegal bid, because they gave a price, and then they gave all these illegal conditions that weren't part that I quite frankly said, there's no way we can legally, basically what they wanted was these escalator clauses in there that for any given reason, not just a CPI, I mean, the CPI was, was another factor in it, but they were, they wanted, if gas prices went up, they could, they could, um, raise the rates if, I don't know, there's like five billion points of reasons, but nothing had any, any way of measuring. So I would never advise a client to agree to a contract that somebody could just go say, okay, we're going up fifteen percent, no rhyme or reason, other than gas prices and insurance went up. And the way that Waste Management had it framed is they would have been able to do that. So the authority rejected those bids and had to set it out again, and then Waste Management came back with a more reasonable contract.
And they didn't have the, the verbiage with escalators that are not measurable?
Correct.
It's still the CPI, but not any of the other escalators?
Correct.
When is this supposed to, I mean, when, when is, I know this is a discussion at night, when do we have to make a decision? When are we gonna?
At the end of this month, the dumpsters will be full. The county just approved their budget last.
Last week.
Last week, when this was in there.
So the authority submitted a budget to the county with recycling dumpsters in the budget request that was sent out to the county. And ultimately, when it got time, and I, I think it was actually at their budget hearing, is when the county decided they were not going to.
Raise the millet.
Raise millet, yeah, to pay for recycling. And so that all happened last, I think, last week?
Why, can I, why is there a difference in, in the locations as to cost?
So it's all by poll gene, like Waveland City Hall is not polled as much, um, Bay St. Louis is, and Diamond Head, the Bay St. Louis City Hall and the Diamond Head are the most frequently, so they have the most tonnage and the most pulls.
And more dumpsters in Bay St. Louis. We got two.
We have two.
Two, right.
You, so, so that's where the eleven.
A month, a hundred and twenty-two thousand a year, but that's why I was wondering if we kept one over the other, why one would be cheaper than the other.
That's just because of the tonnage and the pulls.
Yeah.
If you keep one, it's gonna get loaded down.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's where all these pulls have come, come by, and, and I will tell you, these numbers are raw, these numbers are real, they're not predicted, they're not made up, I mean, these are averages based off of, we've got years of data to support, to support these numbers. And, and they've tried everything from lowering dumps to bringing more dumps to, to doing whatever, and this is, this is, you know, real utilization.
Most, most likely the, the possible, I guess, for those that want the recycling is if we can get fifteen hundred people in the countywide, they can do it at a cost of thirty-three dollars per month.
Citieswide.
Well, it says.
No, that's countywide.
Countywide on here.
No, the fifteen hundred is.
County.
Pretty sure it's city, it has to be, it's, it's not just Bay St. Louis, but it's Bay St. Louis, Waveland, Diamond Head combined, those three, all three cities, but not the county, I do not believe it would be offered at that price to the county as a whole.
It says residents submitting municipalities.
So the three would have to have fifteen hundred.
And, and the problem is, is with, when they include the county, what if one person in, say, Purnleyton or one person in East Plowton decided that they wanted to recycle?
Right.
Right, too far out, that's why it goes up. If they go countywide in.
Yeah, so it would have to be the, within the cities, so they can run.
The higher dense areas.
Once a week curbside for those individuals if they're able to get that, stuff like that.
Yeah. So how many dumpsters do we have at City Hall?
One.
One.
I think it's picked up three times a week for the most part.
So, and it's three seventy-five a pull?
Three seventy-five a pull, hundred and seventy-five a ton.
And we're saying it's got one, half a ton?
Half to a ton, you know.
So the numbers don't add up?
It does. I, I, and the reason I say that like that, I, I went through this today, but you're saying, you're saying five fifty.
Yes, that's accurate.
So six fifty divided by five fifty.
Right.
That's eleven times a month.
They get three, it's three, they get it pulled three times a week.
Three times, okay, if they pull it three times a week.
I'll give you an example.
Pull it.
Yeah, it's twelve times that five fifty.
Okay, if we pull it twelve, three times a week, that's what I was wondering with the usage on it.
I, uh, in, in January, it was pulled thirteen times.
Okay.
I got these numbers wrote down.
It seemed like, it seemed like a lot, what I was asking.
It, it does.
It is a lot.
I mean, that's it.
Thir- thirteen times of three seventy-eight.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Three seventy-five, and then a six-point-five tons that was taken in, comes out to a thousand something, but it comes up to eleven thousand.
Yeah, I just, it just sounded like a lot of pulls.
Six thousand plus the four thousand from there.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I went through it the same way, so, you know, a ton is a hundred and seventy-five dollars and three hundred and seventy-five, five hundred and fifty to make that pull, what it is, is.
Plus.
You know, and, and looking at that, the pulls were half-ton, point six, point three, point six, point six, point three.
And they were full, so you needed to do them.
Diamond Head had one, and Lord knows what was in it one time, it had three tons.
It was a scrap, it was a scrap metal pull.
Here's a back, in, in about midway through January, on one of their pulls, they had three tons.
Could have been the treadmill that was left outside one time.
And whether it was full of water or whatever, but besides that, they had a, a one, you know, one ton, and theirs is down to point six, point seven. And again, evidently, that's what fits in there, because theirs is steadily on the outside, the hoppers and everything, and all. So, so, you know, so our options would come down to, if we want, want to continue to do this, then we need to fund it through the city, which would be at a rate of probably about it, all, all residents, and all, we have probably five thousand households, that includes, you know, Ward Six, which Jimmy collects for that as well on the utility. So we're probably looking around two and a quarter to two fifty a month added to our utility bills to cover this cost, as, you know, and that's, and again, that's based on what we use right now per year and all, and not knowing.
If Waveland don't get one, the usage might go up.
Exactly, the caveat is if we're the only city doing it, like they do it.
How to do it, how to manage it.
I think we battled this same recycling thing a couple of years ago.
I've talked with both cities, um, Diamond Head, you know, they, they don't have the funds to do it and everything. Waveland, you know, talk with a few from down there and all, they're, they don't see any way that they're gonna do it, and, and of course, the county's not at all.
Well, in bottom line, there, there's a pathway for individuals that want to get recycling to get recycling out, they have to get the fifteen hundred customers that sign up, what's, what does that process look like? I mean, is that, how does, how does that work, the authority?
Said the, uh, the utility authority's gonna send that option out to, to everybody if that's the case.
We probably need to get it to send out, um, to, to ours, we could send in our bills and sure.
Doing our utility bills and see.
Add it to it and see.
See it.
And maybe have a link to Coastal's website, where they go on to Coastal and sign up at the interest.
Yeah.
Was it Coastal that's doing it, or would it be?
Coastal as to what would be practical, so the first thing I need you guys to understand is this would not be a utility authority, or a solid waste authority contract, this would not be a City of Bay St. Louis contract, this would be Coastal offering the service on their, on their own.
Yeah.
It's a good service, be an individual contract.
Yeah, it's a subscription.
It's like your extra can.
Okay.
You would pay them directly and everything, not come through, not any of the entities.
And so.
Direct payment to them a year in advance.
The hard part's gonna be, and that's where I think the best thing is to first just start talking to your citizens to see how many people is willing to pay thirty-three dollars a month for this service. Um, because Coastal's going to require the first year paid upfront.
Right.
And I can't say that I blame them from that, from a business standpoint, because if not, they're gonna have a bunch of people sign up for one month.
Right.
And then they go spend millions of dollars on this, on this contract, and, you know, everybody drops the service. So it would definitely be a big commitment, um, you know, whether you're gonna get fifteen hundred customers.
Well, I think we need, I would need to give them that option, right? We need to send a letter stating.
We can put the letter together and send it, you know, and same thing. We can put the letter together and send it, you know, and same thing, we, we'll, we can get Diamond Head to send it as well, probably, and, and, or they might, you know, email it out to theirs and whatever. Whatever we, we see that needs to be done. But yeah, we can do the option, that's one of the things we wanna look at. On a completely different note of this recycling, there's an opportunity we hoping to come, I know we met with, um, two ladies out in the walls about glass recycling. That, that we're hoping may, that may come, and that would be, I think, no cost, pretty much.
I don't remember.
Right now, glass recycling is not an option.
So, but it's an opportunity may come for glass recycling, I know guarantee on that anything.
There's an entrepreneur out of New Orleans who graduated from Tulane, who's basically started a recycling business, drinking some wine one night, as she told us. Her and her friends on a Friday night, they were like, look at all these wine bottles, and it's a shame that they end up in the trash, so they started working on some ideas. It seems promising, so they're, they're looking to expand from Lafayette, um, really to, towards Biloxi.
Okay, so for today, we need to decide, do we wanna continue it and try to fund it, or do we wanna just cancel it, correct? Basically, it's all options.
It is, it is canceled at the end of the month, as far as the utility.
So we don't have to do anything?
So if we don't do anything, it just goes away?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I want.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to at least send a, a letter out to our.
Yeah, we need to give them an avenue or somewhere, maybe the website, update some website, at least give people an idea of what they can do, um, to encourage recycling, how they can, you know, if they can rally enough people to, get enough citizens to have their own pickup s- service.
Yep.
At least to give them an option of how they can move forward to try to get something done.
Get that taken care of and get it sent out.
Just putting out utility bills, I guess, and I don't know if something on our website to have a link to Coastal, sign up here for recycling, and let Coastal tag, you know, reach out to them and explain the process, maybe.
Yeah.
So at least.
I'm sure Coastal deals with it in other municipalities they serve us probably, correct, or what?
Some they do, but my understanding, not just from Coastal, but from industry wide, a lot of people are getting out of it, because it's, this is, this is what's happening, and it's just costing so much money.
It's too expensive.
I talked to Jack, uh, earlier today, and, uh, he said that e- even in Jefferson Parish, as big as that place is, they just can't, just can't cover the cost of it, so they're probably, their council's gonna vote probably to get out of it as well.
And they're hauling that all in Pensacola?
There's, there's very limited recycling facilities. I think there's one in Pensacola, and maybe something in Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge, I'm not sure why they're not in Baton Rouge.
Depends on the traffic, if recently it's probably easier.
Pensacola's an easier run.
Probably.
And then a couple of years ago, y'all might remember, the Pensacola went, uh, caused a fire, and so then we had a suspend service for a while, because there was nowhere to bring this stuff to you. So it's a, um.
Trying to quit buying it.
We're trying to quit buying it a couple of years ago, it really made it tough, so.
And look, I applaud the authority and the county, I mean, I will tell you, they've tried to keep this program alive and, and well for as long as they possibly could.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, it's, until you force people to recycle, we'll, we're a lazy society, we'll never recycle.
No, no, that, that's not, that's not true. What it is, is that it's too expensive to process that. So I, I don't think that's an accurate assumption.
Well.
Because it's, 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 you know, with the ton of the plastic, you can't reuse it in certain fields, so.
Yeah, so I was in Europe for four years, um, you had a, you, you're required to recycle, glass, paper, newspaper, magazines, you was required to compost. You had a paper bag about this tall, about this wide, that was your weekly trash, if they found anything in there.
Well, this is America, I mean.
Again, right, it's not, it's not that it's not available, it, that you're required to do it there, you're required to do it there, so it is sustainable, they do do it. Again, we don't compost, we don't separate our glass, papers and plastics, but yes, it is, it is that scenario.
It's, I think, talked about a while back, it's just.
Yeah.
Forcing people into education.
Yeah, you start charging, charging people by the, the weight of their trashcans.
Yeah.
Right?
They are, they are charged by the weight.
Yeah, some, some, some people can, you know, I mean, you're, you're, we're to the point of putting a load cell on your arm to pick up your trashcan and say, Doug Seal, your trashcan weighed forty-two pounds this week, you're gonna pay twelve dollars for your garbage.
Let's hope they don't.
But then people will be picking stuff in your trashcan.
Yeah, I'm coming to your house, Doug.
I mean, but, right, I mean, but once you start.
I'll throw rocks in you.
Once you get to that point of charging people for a service, then they're like, hey, maybe I should recycle, I should compost, right? That's the steps you have to move forward to, and with, we have technology today, there's some cities that do charge people by weight. But again, until we get that position, people will not recycle.
How much are dumpsters, do you know offhand?
To buy a new dumpster?
No, like to have a dumpster, like if we rent a dumpster to the city, and they pull it.
Depends on the size, I'd say average around three hundred bucks there.
What are we talking about, though? I mean, you know, regular dumpster?
Forty yards.
Regular trash, or?
Forty yard dumpster?
Yeah, it's almost just as.
Six hundred, six and a quarter.
It's just as much, yeah.
Yeah, we still gotta pull them and you've gotta transport them, and I mean, it's.
I know, we pay two fifty a dump with our dumpster.
Yeah, that's what we pay for.
For your small dumpster, Gary, ten yard, eight yard something?
I, I think it's gonna be probably ten to fourteen yards.
Unless.
It's gonna be a price over there of all of them.
An eight yard is about a hundred and fifty dollars a week. That's one pull, two pulls, two eighty.
I was just curious.
So.
I'm afraid we're gonna get dumping grounds too in these recycling businesses.
A forty yard.
You keep them.
A forty yard is about four seventy-five.
Okay, four, four seventy-five.
Thirty yard is around four twenty-five, three seventy-five. But I, I guess if this is for garbage, then it's probably, that would have to go to, um, for corn over there, waste management.
Different.
Yeah.
No, those are the same prices.
Yeah.
Same tippage.
That's the, that's the same, yeah, that's your recyc, that's.
That's to go there?
That's disposal, that's everything.
So about four, four hundred, what did I say, four hundred for forty yard?
Almost the same as a recycling pool.
We have two fifty for our pools, I've got a forty yard.
We're looking at forty yard and a lot more tonnage.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just curious. So any more discussion on the recycling?
I just, I, you know, again, I'd like to get some on the website to direct people.
Maybe they could put something in utility bills, just to explain everybody.
Yeah, both that and the utility bill and the website to direct people to see Coastal and see if, now they wanna sign up on their own.
Yeah.
Giving them an avenue to recycle.
It's options, they didn't get enough people.
Not if the city decides not to do it, but this is why, and, but here's your option if you would like to continue.
Yes, sir. It's unfortunate the county decided to stop it, but that's, it is what it is.
Yep. Updates on the, uh, use of tennis courts, Mayor?
Uh, I had a meeting set up, and, and myself, Mike, and, and Gary, Mon- Monday morning, yeah, with Dr. Reed and, and, um, athletic director and all to discuss this. Very, very open minded and all, you know, one of the things, wanna look at, you know, security over there, sharing costs with them, you know, for resurfacing things like that, um. But I think it's something that's doable, that we can achieve, you know, if we built our own courts, we're gonna have these same expenses.
Right.
So by joining in a partnership with them, we're saving that upfront cost of two, three, four hundred thousand dollars for actually building a court. You know, we talked about a system, I forgot who it was, Gary or somebody, talked about a keypad entry to where you come, you fill your paperwork out, we know who you are, this and that, when you go, here's your keypad.
Kinda similar like Diamond Head does, I believe, Mike, you know, Diamond Head, don't you have cards to get into certain things?
So it would be like that, it would help keep track of who's there, also the same thing was mentioned about the use of the bathrooms and all as well, you could use the same system for that, to where that. And, and so I think it's very good, we have a follow-up coming up and all, you know, wanna put some things together, start looking at some prices. You know, camera's gonna be the main thing out there and everything and, and all, but it was a good thing, um, you know, one of the things they'd like to see is be able to use, you know, the garage or something like for some of their small events and all, you know, in exchange for some of that. And, and, you know, moving forward with that and all, you know. But again, it's something that, that, I think it's achievable, very encouraging.
I thought, I thought what was interesting, like, uh, so to resurface those six courts, it costs probably about sixty thousand dollars, and they have to do this every six to eight years, depending on where it conditions. And if we put a set aside, maybe give them a set amount every, every year in a budget, so it doesn't, it's not one giant.
Maintenance budget. Yeah, it's like a maintenance budget.
Pay thirty grand to go ahead and do this.
It wouldn't hit us all at one time, say, year five, when, you know, we may not have the revenue or something, we would be giving it all along with them, but, you know, and, um. And it got in, into some other subjects as well, you know, using, their thing is, they don't want, you know, they get calls about using the track. And, and they don't wanna get into that, you know, to opening that up and everything, and with, I don't see the need for the track, you know, we've got plenty of places to walk. We've got.
Yeah.
Miles in Cedar Point, miles on South Beach down there with walking tracks, the hot.
Hancock Medical.
Yeah, and also there's plenty of opportunities for that, but I was surprised at that, that they get that many calls to use their track. And if they happen to leave the gate on, there's people out there, and that's a big expense there, if anything ever happens to that track.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, okay, so you'll.
So we'll keep updating on that, bring some information back and all, when we get back with them, get some prices and all, see where we at.
Okay, um, anything else, Mayor?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, council business, uh, motion to set Louis and Best proposal from Wright, Ward, and Hatton.
If we discuss before we vote.
Yes, mm-hmm, Florida Services Fiscal, twenty-two and twenty-three, totaling forty-two thousand, go ahead, Mr. No Block.
Um, I, I saw, I was looking at the AVL bid, and I would like us to move to AVL for several reasons. One, I think we need a fresh eyes on our budgets, um, in our auditing process, we've been using them for about six years now, and this, these variances that they talked about have never been talked about before, they were occurring for some time. And, um, I, I, I personally feel we weren't kept informed, uh, normally we have a meeting before the meetings, before the actual city council meeting, we didn't get any updates from them. And I just think that it was just, uh, totally out of line the way they handled this audit this year. And, uh, I like to see AVL, they're local, they're right across the street, and, uh, I know they're only three thousand dollars more, but still, they're, they're a professional, uh, CPA firm, and I just think we need a fresh eye on, on everything to make sure that what they were doing was, and I didn't like their presentation, uh, it was animated. Um, and again, we didn't hear, um, matter of fact, people were looking at this before I even received a copy of it, so I just think we need a change.
Any other discussion along them lines?
Yeah, I mean, really, a little thousand dollar difference if you don't have to do the seven fifty audit, which I'm not sure we had to do last year, so. Um, again, I, I, I'll have a preference either way, right? Um, it's fresh that eyes, look at things differently, they audit differently. Um, yeah, I just, I have no preference, quite honestly, right? Um, they give us the numbers to look at, we decipher and figure out if they're good or bad and.
It's just, it's just the lack of information we were receiving is what I didn't care for. And when you read it, the last page, it's, it's, it was, I, to me, it was like, why didn't we know something sooner? They've been doing these books for a while.
Right.
These audits.
I, I do like the fact that AVL's local, we can go sit down with them right there and do it, and, you know, they, they, they're members of our community, members of our tax base, members of our.
They did our audit years ago.
Right.
Did they?
Yeah, AVL.
Well, Doug, that just dated yourself. Cause they're not even in the resume.
Yeah, they did.
I agree with No Block on, just sometimes it's good to have some fresh that go through it and fresh eyes to look at it. I also read Mr. Russo's email about, uh, since they changed so many accounts on this this year, whoever comes in next year is probably gonna have to try to figure out.
There's just a lot of journal entries going.
A lot of the stuff, you know.
To move things to those new accounts.
You know, most.
So, and we also did it as a one year with renewables, you know, but I've worked with AVL, I've worked with Wright, Ward, Hatton, and Gill, both are fantastic firms.
I'm good with AVL also, I mean, so.
It's the council's decision.
Yes, I mean.
I went with the lowest bid.
Yeah, if you're, you're okay, I'll make a motion if nobody else is, um.
No, and I just make comment, I mean, just to kinda agree, I think, um, uh, you look at their references, clients in the past, I mean, they all have great qualifications, Mr. Russo, you just said he worked with both of them, they both are very, you know, high standard, so, but again.
Yeah.
I think that six years been with one, it would be another three years with the same group if we were to go, so.
Yeah.
Fresh, I, I just agree, everything stated, yeah.
I'm good, so if you wanna make a motion to, uh, this professional service, we don't have to choose the lowest bid, correct? I mean, we.
Correct, they're proposals.
Yeah.
No, it's not Louis and Best period, that's commodity, it's the proposal.
Yeah, proposals, so we can accept them, just because, I guess I will put something in that you wanna, new, a new auditor.
More new eyes.
A new auditor come in, fresh eyes to look over everything.
What you said, I think is an accurate statement about having another set of eyes, doesn't hurt.
No, 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 so if you wanna make a motion, Mr. No Block, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we reject, um.
No.
Nope. Okay, I make a motion that we accept AVL's proposal, uh, for a two-year contract for forty-five thousand dollars per year, um, as stated in their proposal here.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. No Block to accept, uh, AVL's proposal for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three audit fiscal year, um, with, one year with a year extension after we do it, okay. All right, so motion by Mr. No Block, second Mr. Seal, any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, pass a six zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, new business or old business, Mr. Hoffman?
Um, I got asked last week, and I don't know if we, if we made any headway on this, but the, uh, the field behind the houses on Almanet is owned by the school board. Are they able to get anybody out there to cut that? Some of the residents complaining about vermin and snakes and just.
Yeah, I had, I had noticed riding by there, um, it, I mean.
I hadn't noticed it being cut, so I didn't know if they had been by.
So it hadn't been cut?
I don't think so.
I'll call and remind again.
Right, and then, they had, had asked along the same line about a tree that was, um, down somewhere around, around three oh five Almanet. They wanted us to take a look, to look at, I think they said it was a city planted tree or a city tree that was in the right of way.
Around three oh five.
Three oh five Almanet, I'm not sure exactly where it was, I didn't see it as I drove by, but.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, and Mr. Seal?
Yeah, um, sales tax revenue, casino revenue, um, first time in normal record history that sales tax revenue exceeded casino revenue of forty-two thousand dollars for a three-month period.
Does that take into account the, uh, diversionary taxes being added to it?
I've just, I got sales tax number, that's sales tax numbers, I just got sales tax number that we get on our report.
And what, what did Gary?
So in other words, we do internet sales?
That internet.
No, that's not, yeah.
Totally different.
Yeah.
So it's even gonna be higher than that?
So forty-two thousand dollars more for a three-month period, so it's, I just thought it was pretty neat, right?
Oh, that's good.
Um, so it, sales tax revenue is important, it's continued to generate, um, continue to, to move forward.
Also, um, that's also, you can bet that has to do with, uh, inflation too, so the cost, goods is higher.
Um, that's really it, I talked to Jeremy and Ricky about, when you look at the property maintenance code and the zoning ordinance to get those in line with our fences, one of them, they not contradict each other, but there's two different types of fences in each one of them. Um, I think there was some discrep, some issues there, we talked to both of them Friday about if we can get that ordinance.
Weren't they working on that?
Ordinance is agree.
Weren't they working on getting that back to us?
Well, that's just, that's the, that other fence thing, that's something totally different, but the way the, the fence, the property maintenance code calls out fencing and our zoning ordinance calls out fencing, and they're, they don't jive.
Different.
Yes, they're a little bit different, so I just, we just need to close that up, had a good discussion Friday with a young man that wanted to build one of those, what I call pasture fence, is at his house, and explained why he didn't like it and why it's hard for us to maintain, and, um, he understood, and so, but, um, yeah, it's, it's clarif, keep, keep that for clarification and get it updated, and that was it.
All right, uh, Mr. Lewis?
No, just, just something to bring up, and I don't know, um, I've tried to communicate with residents, but there's been in, on area, kind of Ward Four, especially kind of where I am, I just, I wouldn't say break-ins, but things being left underneath carports, I had something taken, so. Um, Chief, I think you're back there, trying to encourage, I've had a couple, about a month ago, a couple, I guess, Ring, they got it on Ring cameras, and it's, again, they're just going underneath carports, taking any bikes, anything that can basically move. You know, again, our responsibility as homeowners, I know, to put that up, fortunately, we have to do that, um, and again, just trying to encourage, call and dispatch, a lot of times, we'll get it, send here, we got this stolen, but they don't call the police and don't do a, a report on it, so. Mayor, have we, have, have you heard of any increased a- activity in other than areas and kind of Ward Four where you are?
No, I heard about one down right past you there the other night, you know, but, uh, around the corner on, corner of Esterbrook and all, over the last week, they've hit that area. It's almost like it comes and goes, you won't hear about it for a while, and all of a sudden, they wake up and start hitting the neighborhood, and it might, you know, I don't know how many that's actually calling in and filing re- police reports and all.
Yeah.
And that's, we try to urge everybody to call in, make sure they file a report so we can keep it, and that gives them an opportunity as well, I would think, to see if there's any type of track, and they can, you know, some kind of rhyme or reason where this might happen at or something, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it, the other night, I know around the corner, it was, um, one of those three, three o'clock in the morning deals, um, same thing. one of those three, three o'clock in the morning deals, um, same thing, looked pretty much like the same, to me, it looks pretty much like the same person that's down there was on Bay Oaks the other night.
Seems like it's just kind of snatch and grab, we had some, we had like a, something we put on a bike, like a kid carrier, that, again, was just underneath.
And they tried to get vehicles over there, and, and wasn't able to get in, they took a bike and, you know.
The big problem I see is, I had one in my ward, they had on video, got arrested, he's out of jail already, he'll probably go to court and get a slap on the wrist, be out of jail again, he's just a neighborhood problem, and I wish the judge would actually put the hammer down and put him in jail for as long as he can to match his sentence, cause the neighborhood's a lot better place when he's gone.
Right, oh yeah.
I mean, so the ones paying for the court system is losing the money every year, or the same ones having to deal with the, the people not going to jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just my opinion.
You're right.
The judge needs to crack down and say, I've seen you too many times already, buddy, you're gone.
Yep.
I mean, that way the rest of people can live in peace and not worry about this stuff being stolen all the time.
Yeah, and worry about the kids that leave their bikes out in the front yard, and like, they gonna, Mike gonna walk through the neighborhood and thank you, buddy.
Oh, yeah, like Nicky went and demanded shit on this one, it was all on video, so. Yes, sir, anything else, Mr. Lewis?
No.
Anything, Mrs. Irman?
No, I'm good.
Anything, Mr. No Block?
Uh, just a couple of things, um, Chief, can you come up for a second?
You're in trouble.
Why he's not in trouble?
Chief, I'm seeing an increase in these little motorized skateboards going down like Spanish Trail, these electric bicycles, I mean, they fly at a pretty good clip, and nobody's wearing helmets, and do they apply to the same laws as regular, uh, motorcycles?
That's a good point, I look at that.
Because I mean.
They should, because it's on wheels and they're moving.
You know about like the scooters?
Yeah, scooters and, and they, but they, they're not just slow.
Motorized, electric, electric bikes.
Yeah, electric bicycles.
Those skateboards, he's talking about, I've seen them moving on those things.
They move.
Ain't seen a guy on that unawheel.
Saw him too.
He's all, he's all leathered up.
I mean, I just, I just think as a safety issue, they're riding on the wrong side of the road sometimes, you know, Spanish Trail gets somewhat congested, maybe some increased patrols, they're running stop signs, I mean, if they get to running, I should get to running.
Oh, no.
Really?
They pile up same rules.
No, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Same rules of the road.
They're supposed to.
I mean, but they're running stop signs at twenty miles, thirty miles an hour, and if somebody don't see them, especially like at Subie.
If they get clipped, they gonna get.
It's, uh.
Well, we can start, uh, we'll, we'll pay attention, make sure.
I mean, I would just pull them over, make sure at least they got a driver's license, because they'll find out what the legality is.
Hey, what's, I mean, what is the legality of them being on the road, right? I mean, like the little.
It's a bicycle, but it's got a motor in it.
Yeah.
So, but the electric scooters, most kids have them, so I don't know, but you don't have to.
Matter of fact, they're selling them at B and J pit stop, man, they're nice.
Yeah.
I mean, I kinda want one.
Everybody's selling them now.
Yeah. So.
Pretty good weed.
No, no, Kurt's Wheeling Tire's selling them, so.
Okay.
He just was posting on it, they look, they're nice, I've rode one, they fast.
Did you have your helmet on?
You know, I didn't actually. Um, and secondly, uh, I noticed that, uh, you know, behi, especially behind, like on Tenth, there's a lot of people walking in, they're coming into our business, um, chuck at Bay Carpet, some people went in, rifled through some, got all their medical kits out of there, you know, their first aid kits, you know, and ran off. You know, so we put in a whole bunch of new cameras out there the other day, and I, I, I think I just, what I'm seeing is a much more, uh, presence of, um, people just walking and, you know, that's just, they're not, whatever, whatever reason they're coming here.
Kind of vagrancy, I mean, that's definitely, I mean, that's.
It's, it's a growing problem, it's a societal problem, it's not just our city, uh, in fact, we've been fortunate, we don't have to agree with the problems of the city. You look at Walmart, Waveland, we have homeless people living in the dark, against the street.
Well, they got camps out there, yeah.
So, we always, we're, we're stopping, finding out who people are.
The petty crime, okay, just as long as you're IDing them because of petty crimes.
Yeah, we're, they're gonna field interviews, and that's one thing we talk with the officer, so a field interview is anytime, uh, you have a reason, if you see somebody, something doesn't look right, we'll stop, talk to them, now, they can, they can elect not to talk to us, uh, keep on walking, and they can talk to us, but.
Well, not necessarily always doing something wrong.
What those field interviews do is, they do identify potential problems for walking around, especially when it's an odd hour, it's after dark, maybe they have a hood up over their head or a mask, so that, that, that's enough to keep them right there. But as a society and in our community, it is a problem everywhere. Uh, not gonna get any better, obviously, uh, with the city, we wanna think ahead of potentially, on down the road, some preventative measures. Uh, wanna be thinking of, uh, to prevent a landslide of vagrants.
Well, we just can't host them, it's just, that's the problem, you have no, they have nowhere to go.
Right.
And, uh, so that's a safety issue.
It's a difficult situation for them, uh, as well as the city, but they have nowhere to go, and we come in contact, we're aware of it. Obviously, we'll be making contact.
Appreciate it.
Chief, do you have some, uh, getting to the preventive measures, are there some recommendations or ideas that you've had other, maybe municipalities that have been successful, or is that something we just need to?
Uh, Hattiesburg, I was talking with Chief Hattiesburg, uh, she had a, they had a good ordinance, uh, a no camping ordinance within the city limit. So, any tents put up within the city limit, uh, they had, after being noted, four hours, yeah, so that eliminates, uh, that does make the issue.
I had a few years ago, didn't want to get murdered, or a couple of people get murdered over there in a Waveling camp by the Walmart.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yes.
Yep.
Mental health was the big issue with that.
It is.
And if the state or.
Yeah, so you gotta be careful.
Mental health.
And you have a lot of that, uh, so, if there's not, unless they're willing to be admitted to the facility, they're left without.
I think they can only keep them for three days or so, so it's kind of.
One big thing we can do as a city is attack the blighted structures and stuff like that, to not give them a place to go to the reside, you know.
Right. And, and some of these property crimes, like, uh, what Councilman Lewis would state, you know, the bicycle seat, uh, those are hot items, uh, when you don't have a home, bicycle. We have a lot of residents that are leaving their vehicles unlocked, uh, they're parked on the property, but we don't live in a day and a half anymore before we take the house and lock it in our car. And they're leaving wallets, firearms, things that we just need to find, find everybody, the locker thing is not the same. It's not the same as what it was thirty years ago, and, and all, and need to pay better for that, but as police department will be, uh, paying attention to who's walking.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, anything else with No Block?
I'm good.
You're good?
All right. One thing I hear was, uh, Mayor wants to thank you and Public Works for all the, uh, lights at the fire station seem to be working on the outside of the building station too, parking lot lights and building lights, they look good, and I seen them working on streetlights the other day, so, thank you all.
Yeah, we got a pretty good guy trying to keep.
Good, good deal. All right, uh, next up, Public Forum, Mr. Steve Barney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for the opportunity to come, uh, speak with you today, um, I'm Steve Barney, I've got a little pottery studio, as most of you know, uh, one oh one Central, corner of Washington, um, for many years, it has been my, uh, vision to develop a curriculum to teach about science and engineering through, uh, pottery. And, uh, I wanted to announce to you that I am, uh, gonna be hosting a television show with Mississippi Public Broadcasting, uh, about STEAM, about, uh, teaching pottery, uh, and teaching STEM through the experience of pottery, and I'm very excited about this, I'm not asking you for anything, I'm just letting you know, I got a call a couple of weeks ago, we're working with, uh, people at the Mississippi Department of Education, Mississippi Arts Commission, and it's a huge project, it's my life's work, and we're gonna be, um.
Do you have a date yet?
Well, the pilot is gonna be shot in the spring, and we're gonna be starting auditions this fall, we're gonna be working with kids in the Hancock School District, Bay Waveling School District, the private schools and, and homeschoolers, uh, the pilot's gonna be shot, and then it's, it's, it's kind of a long road from there, because then that pilot gets shopped around to, uh, PBS affiliates around the country, and then they go and get all these big grants, and then we're gonna be doing three years of production, thirty-six half-hour episodes, uh, it'll be in like twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven, um, timeframe, and I'm not saying that I'm gonna be the next, uh, PBS star, but there's a chance that that may happen, and, uh, if that happens, I think that has tremendous, uh, benefits for workforce development and, and tourism, and I just wanna say, uh, thank you for the opportunity to do all the stuff that I do here, I, I do the best I can to maintain that property, I appreciate the work that Public Works has been doing to address the drainage issues, work that the police department has been doing to keep that area safe, um, and I just wanted to let you guys know, if you know some kids in that twelve to fifteen age who are real smarty pants that wanna be on, uh, TV, we'll let them know about the, the auditions, so. That's what I wanted to share with you today.
Awesome. You know, it's an interesting thing, uh, the arts program you're talking about, cause not every kid has a ath, is an athlete, and it just gives them an avenue for something different, uh, to participate, matter of fact, I think we talked about that when we met with Sandra Reed the other day. So that, that topic did come up.
Sure, yeah, and I'll be working with Sandra and, uh, and the, the school department, of course, we've been talking about the STEM stuff when Michael was, uh, up at, at Diamond Head, so this has, uh, big implications, not just for a TV show, but we're gonna be working with Infinity Science Center, Lynn Meadows, and, uh, teachers in the area to get this, this curriculum out there, so that's what I'm working on.
Congratulations.
I need to watch whatever's on that pilot show, wasn't, um, was it named Bob Ross in his first painting on TV, sold for like ten million dollars today?
Well, I will, I will tell you that my pottery is gonna be worth a lot of money, but, uh, I'm not sure if I'll be alive to see that happen, but please start collecting my pottery while, while you can, so.
Start collecting now.
We'll keep you posted on, on the project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Congratulations.
Please say that.
Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Cliff?
Rabble.
It's probably gonna be about a text I received and forgot to respond.
Cliff Rabble, seven oh two Third Street, I have to apologize to Kyle, cause I called him, caught him off guard on some of these agenda items, but, uh, I'm glad to hear what y'all said about the recycle, because in my previous life, uh, I worked, that was part of our supply, fiber supply. And I can tell you, recycle business is not a profit center, it is a cost center. Reason they're shipping it to Pensacola is because, if you ever have a chance to go to a sorting center, try to avoid it. It is a, it is just one step shy of a garbage dump. It is a difficult, nasty place. People that really wanna recycle, they can collect aluminum cans, place right up on six oh three, they can give them to them. Or they can get a few to, I got a gal that clean houses for me that, uh, they will get a pickup truck load of aluminum cans, and what they get for that amount of aluminum will just about pay for the gas to haul it up there.
Yeah. Yeah.
People, you know, so, so, glass, I'm surprised anybody's recycling glass, quite honestly. Cardboard, yesterday, where you go to Walmart, backside of Walmart, where they, it's nice, clean, containerized, they'll take, it's got food stuff in it, they can't use. Uh, newsprint, newsprint's going out of business, yes, they have a federal requirement to have a certain amount of recycled fiber in there, uh, it, it's, that, that's one of the really fun places.
Well, Echo only comes out once a week.
Yeah, I know, but you go to like, like Atlanta or the big cities, even, even those cities have kind of backed off the recycle, because it costs so much money, so.
And it's, uh, locked in it. Yes.
Yeah, and Doug, you may mention, uh, in the preview thing, about every week, somebody wants some, it's two, it's only two and fifty, two, two dollars fifty cents a month. Yeah, but Jesus, this and this and this and this, so thank you, sir, and as far as forest recycling, Portland, Oregon, I have a niece that lives in Portland, Oregon. They got some real horror stories, because they only pick up trash once every two weeks. So, the recycle bins are out there, they also have, uh, a dime or a nickel on the glass, and, so what happens is, you put your recycle stuff out, the vagrants that we just talked about, come through, and they collect the things that are worth going and get some money for, and scatter trash everywhere. Yeah, and, uh, it, 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 it's a difficult thing. Uh, the mindset in the Americans is, you know, we don't, how many of you guys remember getting, the, the milkman would bring it in glass jug, and put the glass jug back?
I don't remember that.
They quit doing that, because you don't remember that, do you?
I think Kyle does neither.
I heard stories about that.
But, they quit doing that.
Portland's and New Orleans, they had it.
Yeah, that, if you ever went to one of those dairy places, the, the bulk of their business was cleaning jug. They had this much for cleaning jugs and this much for filling them. So, recycle is, is a great idea, but it's, it costs money.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate it, cause if I wanna recycle, which, which I, aluminum and steel, I do. Take it up there and I sell it, and it pays for my gas to drive up there. So, I guess, I, I understand the answer to, if they got fifteen hundred, five, fifteen hundred people, those fifteen hundred people would get the service and pay the thirty-three dollars a month, not fifteen hundred people in the county, and then we all get stuck with a thirty-three dollar a month bill.
No, no.
And, uh, I think I applaud the chief for saying what he did about vagrants, uh, I had a gentleman, this friend of mine that lives on Beach Boulevard, right near Highway ninety, was talking about somebody that seems to wanna start camping out on the beach, right up there, uh, and you got to, what are you doing? We had one last spring up, uh, in our area, Kyle, up by, uh, Ramon, not by Ramon, yeah, well, it was, between Ramon and the beach, and Bay Oaks on the beach. And, uh, I'm not sure what the guys did, but they encouraged this young lady to move on.
Yeah, good deal.
But, yeah, we don't wanna let that get started.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff.
That's it, gentleman, I came to talk about the recycle.
All right, thanks, sir.
And Gary, I do appreciate you having to put up with the harassment you did last Tuesday, but it was a good discussion.
You gotta have, you gotta talk, where are you going?
That was a discussion.
Maybe we'll have another one soon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Brian?
Recycling, but I'm coming from a different direction. Uh, Brian, they're off, uh, Wavel.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I came, I, because I saw the recycling on the agenda, that's, I sit back there, and I, I didn't come to speak, but cardboard is, there is money in recycling cardboard. And cardboard packaging and whatnot is just increasing. And I'll finish up with, because I've checked with Clayborne Hill and Walmart, with all the cardboard they have that they're bundling up in the back, and they contract out with that. A company pays Clayborne Hill, they have the compressors, they, they, uh, condense it all for them. And they told me it is a definite, the Clayborne Hill, uh, owners, it is a definite revenue source for them, definitely. They love the relationship, so I don't know if the city can develop something like that with this outfit, or there's other outfits. But I would encourage you to check with Frugal, Clayborne Hill, and Walmart.
Maybe we need to start letting them drop off the cardboard there, and they can sell it and make money with it.
It might, it might be an avenue.
Yeah, um. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
They don't want contamination.
Thank you. Then, seal on public forum, all right. City Clerk's report, motion to approve the basic and full stock of the claims twenty-three dash oh three nine, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. So, the motion, motion, Mr. Seal.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass a six-zero, thank you, anything else, Mr. Riso?
Thank you.
All right, um.
Someone wants to know why you forgot him.
I was just gonna say that. What's that?
I think you over.
Oh, touch. I just skipped right over getting, uh, project updates.
He's so quiet over there.
I'm sorry.
You got a haircut, you didn't recognize him.
My glasses aren't working too good.
Okay, thank you, Josh, for allowing me to come tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Heather, for reminding Doc to overlook.
We're trying to speed up the meeting, so.
So, you got my report, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, other than that, we don't have anything for approval or?
We're getting closer to a by our drive, I see.
By, I was, I wish Mr. Reed was here to share in our excitement, yeah, um, both of them.
I know, so I saw that.
It's a confusing process.
Oh, my God, it's.
And I tried to go over this with Mr. Riso this week, so MDOT's approved the C E N I contract, but they have to be resubmitted by the city to MDOT so they can approve them again.
Again, right?
So that's what we're working through right now, um, but we are, that is a big milestone that we've met.
Efficiency, huh, at its finest.
And the water well, we don't, not sure what, what our loan forgiveness will be, but we've been approved to put the application.
Been approved, everything's been submitted, um, we should know something probably by at least, maybe then. Been approved, everything's been submitted, um, we should know something probably by at least, maybe the end of September, when we get the loan documents in. All indications that it's a hundred per- a hundred percent funded, but until we see that in writing, we.
Yeah, we'll take, take it for granted.
Did they vote in favor of that, to support? Okay, good, that was my question. I didn't have nothing really.
The construction bids for the pickleball courts, it's been advertised two weeks, three weeks?
That bid is. Pickleball court bid, October twelfth.
So we're open to bids October twelfth?
Open to bids October twelfth.
Okay, awesome.
Have we looked at, well, I guess with the new, with the tennis courts, we can, cause we had talked about trying to do dual courts. So we'd have tennis and, and pickleball court.
That was mentioned, but we also, we would have to restart all of your drawings and bid and everything else that was mentioned, but never directed at one of the previous meetings.
One of the things with that also is, who uses it, when, where, why, how?
I mean, if we have access to the public tennis courts and we're gonna chip in with maintenance and, and all that, of that, I think that's, that's perfect. But if that's gonna be the only courts in town, then we may need to.
Well, it should free up maybe City Hall over there, but tennis court back to that.
Yeah, and we talked about moving forward, possibly putting tennis courts at McDonald Field, as we see a need.
We can always build tennis.
Anything else, Mr. Canici?
Um, Jason, on the, on the Good and Fiber Street and all those canals, did y'all ever do those, uh, sediment?
Yeah, we actually finished the hydro surveying this week, um, and so I'm waiting on the, uh, the permitting consultant that we have, gonna go out with us to pull the samples, get those tested. And they will know exactly how much material we can remove and if it's beneficial use or not. And that way, once we submit, uh, the, uh, the grant applications, we'll know where we can put the material. The field work's completed on that.
All the tribes have signed off?
We haven't got to that point yet. We just finished our scan, that's it.
How deep is it, real shallow?
An area, it's, some areas are very shallow.
Let's hope the sediment is what they need.
How long you think the permit's gonna, uh, take for Sienna Lane drainage?
That one, last time we checked on it, um, I believe it's all been approved, we're just waiting on the signatures from, uh, the agency. So that we've received, uh, no further comment from them, we addressed all their concerns. Um, so once we get, get it signed off, then we should be ready to bid that one out.
Thank you.
There.
Anybody have anything else or no? Sorry, I missed you.
But alright.
I thought you was just coming to join us, cause you liked us, so.
I do, very much.
I'm good, um. I'm good, I don't have anything. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Consent agenda, A through U. Do I have a motion?
We talked about the, uh, funding for the, uh, kayak pier. Putting a grant application for a hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, see?
Yes, that's, um. The grant, we applied, yeah, the outdoors, we applied for it this year and didn't, um, we're looking at reapplying for it for parking and upgrades out there along with it. And everything, um, we also, I think, may have put in some other grants, or we'll be looking at for purchasing a property as well. Which restore fund of one of them?
We did something for half a million or something, I think.
Something like that.
Four or five hundred thousand, a couple of months back, yes.
But this is just a grant, again, it was, we applied for it last year and didn't get it, so we're reapplying.
Okay, it's just an additive grant, we get this and we ask for some more money.
And we're also leveraging, if you look at it, it's leveraging the dollars we've already invested.
See that?
So no other additional cash from the city.
If they, if they would allow, if they, they would ask them to consider that.
But we're, the way we've worded it, it's, we've put in one point three million. We're asking for another one fifty from you to kind of do phase two, add kayak and some boardwalk and I think a low level pier and other things.
So did we add, did we ask for money for more parking, and that we talked about property acquisition and parking?
Not from this grant.
Not from this one, but from the other one.
Okay.
That wouldn't fit for this particular one.
Okay, cool. That's good, alright, thank you.
Good. Yep, okay, any other questions?
Just a quick update, uh, Mr. President, uh, I know we have a, an invoice for Iran, where are we at, Mr. Eso, on that? I mean, in terms of just the timeline and what phase?
Yeah, I asked him, I asked him particularly, I said, please send me an invoice in September, so that way fiscal year end and things like that. Um, they're doing well, I, I got an email from him this, uh, this week, on just a couple of details, cause they're starting to work on text. Like, how do we want Bay St. Louis to, you know, throughout the whole document, those, I mean, just technical stuff. Um, I think they're progressing, he's talking about having another trip down here to kind of do some more daily, just, you know, field work for himself. Um, but things are progressing well.
Are they done, do they still have advisory meetings planned or?
Oh yeah, that still goes throughout, whenever they, their next step would be.
Okay, alright.
So yeah, that, that group will stay active towards the end.
Yeah, just a reminder, I think you said one of those guys teaches the land use classes at MML.
Bob does.
And we was talking about trying to get him to maybe host a class for the planning zoning and the council and stuff, possibly. Can we work on that still? We had that discussion one night during the meeting, I don't know if it went anywhere or not, but, and I talked to some of the Waveland ultimate too, they would like to attend it also, and maybe even their planning zoning people. Cause that land use class is really a, a good class to take, because a lot of old planners own, don't really have any training or anything, so.
Be happy to talk to them about that.
Yeah, if we can set something up like that, that'd be great, appreciate it.
I think one of MML's like a four-hour class that he does is full zoning and land use thing.
Yeah, and you won't wanna approve nothing when you leave it.
Right.
It's pretty, pretty good class, though. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, uh. A motion, I'm sorry, a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Uh, recess meeting September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and the city workshop, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended by Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. No Block, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, pass a six zero, um, anything, Ms. Smith?
Everything I have is covered.
Okay, you had something, Mr. Seal, you said?
Nah, just, I'm not gonna bring this up, but we got a letter in our mailbox, Mr. Mayor, um, about some pay issues and stuff. I'm sure y'all are working through that administration, correct?
About what?
Some pay discrepancies and stuff, I think.
I have no clue what you're talking about, I don't know.
All the councilmen got letters in their mailbox. Um, so you wanna, that's administrative function and person to talk to me and I said, really gotta go, really gotta go through the administration. That's, um.
I checked my mailbox, yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I checked mine. Okay, I mean, just do note it, I know y'all working on it and.
Yeah.
Alright. That's, if we're in our mailbox, it's, we acknowledge it, but it's all, it's not our, not in our swim lane, I don't need it.
Alright, anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Mr. Seal?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 What do we, they do?
Pass a six zero.